Okay.
Okay. I have eight clocks. Recording off. We'll go ahead and it started on this. Beautiful morning and and. Hope everyone's doing well and will I've asked supervisor Gomez to lead us in the pledge.
Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Gomez and once again it's it's your nice the backdrop we have now. I appreciate everyone that was involved in that. That is really nice. We'll now go to a call to the public. Is there anyone that'd like to address the boarding call to the public? Morning.
Hi, Jean Swannison and I work in engineering part time. Mostly I wanted to thank the board of supervisors for their support for the AmeriCorps project. Both Richard Lunt and David Gomez came out to see rock dams in progress and for the barbecue that they had from afterwards, the Dutch oven. They'd none of them ever had Dutch oven cooking before, so they were quite surprised and pleased by all of that. I also wanted to. Thank you.
Well, you're thanked again there. So, okay. But I also wanted to but to thank Reed Larson, particularly the engineer, for allowing me to persist with this alternative sixteen, keep the sediment home, even though both NRCS and the Phoenix engineers were discouraging on it, got rejected, even though the NRCS engineer was the one who named alternative sixteen, keep the sediment home, but we had to persist with it and he allowed me to do that and I thank him very much for that. The AmeriCorps team was extremely impressive. They were a good group of kids. I'm impressed with the organization in general. Anybody wants to know about how that the whole thing works, more than happy to to tell you about it, how they get their stithen at the end and all of that kind of thing. It's pretty, pretty interesting. They were a good bunch of hardworking kids. Some of them were really not quite in shape to do rock dams, but you know, not one of them complained. And they were cheerful, worked on and so forth. They got two hundred and fifty-two rock dams done one thousand two hundred and sixty feet because one of the guys, Jake, he was in charge of quantifying all of those things. Melissa, the team leader, said it was probably the favorite thing she's done in her whole AmeriCorps career, and I think that they are, they said the other AmeriCorps teams were going to be jealous of what they got to do out here in Greenie County and how impressed they were with how pretty the county was. It did not expect to see anything other than sand and cactus. They also learned a lot too, how to cope with pack rats because they ended up camping in at our sons in the some of the wall tents there, how to cope with a tent that fell down. I learned a lot of leadership and all that, but they hung in there and did it anyway. They organized themselves and stayed flexible. I do believe there will be follow up. That I think we'll do it next year. In fact, I have a call with AmeriCorps scheduled at nine thirty this morning to go do exactly that, the debriefing, and I thought they were outstanding. I I I recommend AmeriCorps as an organization to join if you have kids or grandkids that are interested and or to get them in on other projects too.
Thank you. Thank you, Jean, and and I know we're not supposed to respond, but thank you for for your persistence. It had never happened without you and and thank you. Anyone else in call to public? Yes, Nancy.
Wasn't gonna say anything, but you know how that works. But I just wanted to let you know, oh, I'm Nancy Jane Welker. I'm with the Sanzia project for the pattern group and I'm also with the Rio Soul project with Southwestern Power Group. And I just wanted to let you know that Sanzia, we are laying foundations. We're also stringing wires. The helicopters are working. The people are on the ground and they're working hard. And it's so exciting talking to the construction people because they you haven't, you have to know how construction people are, their eyes just light up when they're out there doing the job. And they're so excited. So I wanted to thank you all again for always being there with us and we're bringing it on. So and whatever comes, we'll we'll fight that down, but the project's moving ahead. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, Daniel, please.
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Daniel Chivontes, Clifton resident. Chairman Lunt, before I begin, may I have something to share with you?
Please. Thank you.
Gentlemen, you might recall that during last week's supervisor meeting, our county administrator Derek Gretheir and his assistant Bianca Costanera, clerk of the board, during their calendar and events mentioned to the board two upcoming events that involve emergency schools, one being eighth grade promotion and the other senior year graduations. I have two neighborhood families that each have a female eighth grade student that are preparing for their eighth grade promotion ceremonies. What I want to share with you today is that I too experienced my own eighth grade promotion ceremony in Manzi and I managed my certificate of promotion signed by then Lawrence P. Lemmons, county school superintendent and administrator PH Davidson. I also mentioned, I also managed to safely keep a copy of a nineteen sixty-eight copper cat yearbook, which includes photographs of then Mr. LP Lemmons, high school principal and Mr. PH Davidson's superintendent of emergency schools. I would have gone on to graduate from Manzi High School as a senior year student. However, because of my father, Victor died during my junior year of high school in Manzi, my mother and I, my predecessors, had to relocate to Clifton because we lived at forty-nine Hila Street, twelve south housing, a house that is still occupied today by a Freeport family employees. That same nineteen sixty-eight copper cat yearbook includes photographs of then David Gomez, his sophomore year student at the time. Mr. Gomez was a member of the Spanish Club and also a member of the Spanish National Honor Society. Today, Mr. Gomez is serving as a third member of the Greenie County Board of Supervisors and I am here today to share with you that eighth grade promotion ceremonies are something serious for Manzi's school students and Supervisor Ron Campbell can attest to that. Thank you, gentlemen, for allowing me to speak to you today and I have a copy of your book in case you want to.
Thank you. I know you don't want to lose this, but the wildcat was the C or a K.
This is emotional. Oh, yeah. Thank you, gentlemen.
Anyone else in call to the public? Okay, we'll move on to agenda item two, the board supervisor convenes, the board directors, Green County Public Health Service Districts, and after the order of business, we'll reconvene as board of supervisors. A consent agenda.
So move that we approve the consent agendas posted.
Also get that. Have motion in a second. Is there any discussion here? Now we proceed to vote. Although it's in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, motion passes. We are now convened as the board supervisors and the board of supervisors will convene as the board of directors of Greenie County flood control district and after the order of business, we'll reconvene as the board of supervisors. A consent agenda.
So move that we approve the consent agendas posted.
Also get that. Have a motion. The second, is there any discussion? Hearing now will proceed to vote. Although it's in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, motion passes. We are now convened as the board of supervisors and we will go to agenda item four, Mr. Rupier.
Thank you. I'm trying to organize my last thoughts here to catch you up on what we've been up to. Last week I ended with some well deserved praise for for staff. Renee and Austin, I'll call them Ruston, combined them together. I'm gonna start with that because last week I was out for a couple of days during the week. While I was gone, we were trying to figure out why we were so out of balance and to their credit, Renee in particular identified the funds that explained the difference. So I'm gonna show you the different balance and why why we're in we're in balance at the moment. Those numbers are gonna change slightly, but it's gonna be hundreds or thousands of dollars, not millions of dollars. And in a short, Renee identified those funds. He and Austin worked through the analysis of figuring out why they hadn't been properly accounted for by need the previous week. We spent about an hour on the phone as I was traveling back last week and and we sat down and figured out yesterday Renee and I spent probably two, three hours going through to make sure these funds made sense. We will go back and review our work again to make sure they're accurate. I'm gonna start with our official county budget. We're gonna walk through a few things. See if I can figure out how to care here. Okay, this is a sheet we're all familiar with by now. Why I can't make it bigger in this format? I don't know. Not that. That wasn't helpful.
That bottom corner, bottom right hand corner, can you look up?
There it is. Ah, right there. Thank you. So we are currently in balance. Last year's ending budget balance was seventeen million, nine forty-seven. She's just shy of eighteen million. We're about two point seven, two point eight higher than that this year than last year. And I'll explain to you why we're higher, where that money's coming from, of what we're not doing on the expense side that brought us into balance. I've got the four million dollars here highlighted. That four million dollars is general fund money with reserve. I I took the opportunity to go back and and call my predecessor, Kate Gail, and say, explain to me how we got there. When when we're when we received, it used to be one point five million, now one point eight million. And I says, what did that? And she says, we simply slowly built that up. So if you could picture now a five gallon bucket, or in this case a four million dollar bucket, and every year we scoop out one point eight million and put in the general fund for use. And then that money is scooped in from the FMI donation. So that four million you see there represents that ongoing balance that is our fiscal stability reserve.
We have self-reneated.
Renedate, yeah. At the risk of of the the financial stability is a name that the auditor general said, yeah, this is approved. And it and it comes with restrictions and we've reviewed those even just in the last month as our revenue dipped below four hundred thousand in in March, as we've been keeping careful, close watch on that. Reason I've got to highlight it is that as our budgets have increased, that four million dollar bucket was built when our budgets were in the eleven, twelve, thirteen million dollar range. My recommendation is we start to build that back up above four million, probably to target around five million. Why that's there is that if we ran into either a sustained recession or our benefactor decided that it was no longer in their interest to to stabilize that fund, that represents enough money to get us through to a budget override. So which would be approximately twenty-six months. So if if by the time you get to the August, September part of a year and we see that we're gonna be in trouble, then we would we would nurse off of this. We wouldn't use it all at one time. We would nurse off of this to get us to a budget override election in the next general election cycle. So it's gonna be held on even years. That's why it's there. Our our tripwire for using this is to, well, at one month below four hundred thousand, we start looking and saying, why is this happening? Which we did. We went back. We've analyzed that. We looked at the at the cost of production. We know why this is happening. We will never know the dollar for dollar exact amount because that formula is a is a protected formula that that we don't get to know the particulars of that. What goes into that? Thank you. But we know, we know why it dipped. This last month, our revenues will back up to, give me Renee, four, four eighty-four. But had we dropped below four hundred thousand twice, then at that point, we are required to staff to bring you tools and solutions to begin to taper our budget. Some of those things might include no more use of private cars. We use only county cars for travel. It may mean bringing all vacant positions to the board for approval. We may leave some of those positions vacant. But we begin to implement things that taper our budget down to meet our revenue. That's always difficult at the end of the year because you don't have so many months left to make that work. I'm gonna also suggest that we move probably next year to a higher tripwire. It may be four fifty a month. Somewhere's in there. We'll do some analysis to give you a better look. But again, that four hundred thousand was built when when our budgets were several million dollars less annually. Had we had a higher tripwire this year, we would probably have been alerted to the problems. We we saw the decline, but we would probably have taken evasive action earlier in our budget. So those are two things that that I I want to explain why we why I got that highlighted, what we ought to be thinking about. This two million dollars up here, just above it. If we got into a position where we were either insolvent or where we we could not meet our debt obligations, this is what would pay those down. So that so that we would, we wouldn't have not have money to pay for graders and car, whatever we have financed at the moment. We have shifted almost all of our, I'll call them personal vehicles, our personal size vehicles, our passenger vehicles. We've been paying cash for them, except during the pandemic when we could not get cars. We have some on lease purchase with enterprise. Our heavy equipment, we've continued to finance for two reasons. One, we have a very favorable trade-in program. And we also have, well, for example, I think we just got, Tony, you remember the the cost of the greater quote?
Like a hundred eighty-nine.
Hundred eighty-nine, but by the time we get credit for the trade-in, it'll run us a little over two hundred thousand dollars. And so that's a program, they have favorable financing rates, and so we've we've been able to rotate our equipment in a way that makes sense, even as interest rates have risen. They've not risen as high with our, if we went out to market, we would probably be paying a higher interest rate than we get with with cat on their cat financing.
Eric, I, you know, you you say you're gonna, you're thinking about raising the the trigger point where we start. We haven't had, we're well within our budget because we we budget conservatively and and I just as long as we budget conservative plea and I just, I guess I don't see if 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 we're not having to go into these funds because of our our budget, the way we budget, then why would you want to raise the the trip? Where we start looking at things.
Because our overall expense burn rate, if you will, is also rising. Exactly. So so for example, budget you're gonna see is built on still the five percent raise as opposed to the four. So for those that are lowest entry wage earners over the last three years, they will have experienced an almost twenty percent rise in their in their wages. Now, likewise, minimum wage has gone up nearly twenty percent as well. We've been able to stay ahead of those of those inflation rates and and this will put us there as well. We dropped before. We should still stay ahead of inflation. But because of that, and we know that the biggest single driver of our expenses is wages. And so that's why I would say we ought to look at, and I don't have it on before you yet, but we ought to look at a higher tripwire simply because our burn rate is is faster than it or higher than it than it used to be in a smaller budget years.
Okay, that's fair enough.
So what, where's the difference in that that roughly two point seven million dollars? What we've done is we've prioritized and budgeted three funds. One, One, uh, I'll explain separately the two you already mentioned. One is the ARPA funds um that we will now put to the highest priority to spend. Second is the L A T C F funds, uh, which will then prioritize as our second source of funding for our capital projects. So that one-time money is used for one-time projects. It does not go into our regular day-to-day. And we will use it first. The third source is what we label revenue loss donation fund. And I'll cover that one separately. Pull up another.
So the two point seven also includes stills one time.
It does.
They are.
And that's different this year. Why? I assume it wasn't included last year. Did we have those ARPA funds last?
Let me, let me cover the other, the lost donation and I'll cover that and why.
That out there.
Yeah, no, it's, it's like explaining that, right?
Have to be spent by one point. Yeah. It's like people's brain that understands it.
Hey, it's gonna take me a second to get where I need to get to. We're gonna do a little bit of history lesson here. Um since Supraz Gomez was such a stellar student, he was, he would go right on them.
He deals in Spanish.
I can do it in German and a little bit of sign language. I'm sorry that my Spanish is. Okay, I'm gonna take you back to this red number, eight thirteen uh three twenty-three. This was the month. So we knew for about a year and a half, two years that this was eventually coming. We had been alerted um that there would be a change in the way that electricity was, was taxed in the sales tax formula. And it would result not only in a loss of revenue for one month, but as, as you know from past times, when, when, when there's ever a mistake, the Department of Revenue simply sucks that out. They just don't send us money for that month. And they not only don't send us money, sometimes they withhold the next month or, or whatever else. So we knew this would eventually hit. That represents how much we were down in that month alone. What that number does not show is how much revenue we would have gotten if this didn't hit. What we did not know is when, we had been given assurances that, that we would be made whole as part of that uh with, with FMI. What we did not know is when that would come or what those, what if any restrictions would be on that money. And so I asked Renee back in the day to set up a separate fund. We called it Fund Three O Two. It's called the Revenue Loss Donation Fund. And it was set up very much like our one ninety-nine fund, like an FMI donation, except it was separate money. We needed to be able to look at it separately. So we set up a separate fund. That money didn't come until uh late February the next year. Um, we did not budget it in FY twenty-four. It's, it just sat there last year. That was one of the funds that Renee reminded me, hey, we've got this and it's, and it's there untouched. Had we budgeted it in twenty-four, that would have contributed to a higher cash carry forward now. So instead of an eight point seven cash carry forward, we would have been in the neighborhood of, of ten million. What we have done is we've included that budget now. Or we've included this fund now in the FY twenty-five budget and transferred it from three oh two into the general fund. So it will have the same effect as a higher cash carry forward, but it'll be accounted for on our official budget forms by a transfer on Schedule B. Does that, that make sense?
Makes perfect sense, but, but apparently with that's a deficit, we were able to carry that, cover that, correct?
Yes.
Year. And, and when we received the funds, I mean, we'd already paid, paid our bills.
That's exactly correct. Cause you'll recall in FY twenty uh three, when this occurred, we were still experiencing very high revenue, seven hundred seventy-four in, in uh June, July. Yeah. So I mean, our, our revenues were ridiculously high. I say ridiculously, historically high that year. Nothing ridiculous about getting a money. I, that's always a good thing. No one cries that my lottery winnings are too big. Um, so exactly. So, so we saw that in particular, the early part of FY twenty-three, that our revenues were high enough. We had projected and we, we exceeded our projections three years in a row. And so, yes, um, even though we, we booked a deficit on that month, we still had sufficient revenues to cover what we had budgeted and still bank some other money. So, um, but that one point three now, we're pulling out of that reserve and putting it into our general fund budget.
I had one point four, but one point three.
One, one point three, one point. The first number is, that's like gas stations, alright? It's two point five nine and then it's going to two point five, whatever it is.
We'll take one point three nine.
We'll, we'll take it. Let's uh, let me go to another screen here. Sorry for the clunkiness of moving around.
And assume six hundred thousand.
This is something I, I put together this morning to try and, and explain how we use, how we've been able to use ARPA funds and how we're going to continue to use ARPA funds. I'll blow this up too because it is rather small. So the total amount of ARPA funds that we received, that we went through the project almost two years ago now, to decide where we'd spend it, was one point eight four four million. Um over the course of the last three years, what we have done is we have budgeted essentially one point eight four four million in the general fund. Where we have been using that money is for salaries and, and Renee, um, it's, it's been primarily salaries in the budget, excuse me, in the board's office. So we budgeted in the general fund, and this is in the aggregate. This wasn't all in one year. This was spread out over, over two years. There's a little bit remaining. Essentially, we budgeted this much in the general fund for salaries, but we didn't pay it out of general fund. We paid it out of ARPA. That created a one point eight million dollar, I call it a bubble, but that general fund money that we had budgeted wasn't used. That money now resides in the, in the budget, the total amount. And, and we, we would, we would put that in what we call General Fund One O One, One O Five. So that's where we then have been billing ARPA projects against that One O One, One O Five. The total again is one point eight million. There's about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars left that will be paid in next fiscal year for salaries and that money will then move in the same manner into the One O Five Fund. Um, you've heard me jokingly say this is federally authorized money laundering. Um that's what it looks like on paper. Is you get money in, you budget it, you pay for it with another source. If you, if we were the mob, we'd be selling pizza, but booking drug dollars. Um, it's, it's a similar, i- it's similar in as much as we, we budgeted, but we didn't spend the general fund money we budgeted. Paid for it with ARPA, which left a general fund bu- bubble, which we are now billing our projects against. Um this makes sense? Alright, we're gonna go back to, um, let me see if I've got it here. And please, if at any point something I say doesn't make sense, please stop me and, and uh we'll go over it again. Now this sheet should look familiar. This is the one we've used to prioritize our ARPA projects. Renee and I unfortunately, far too late in the, in the evening last night, began to look at this and try to fill in what is left. I'm going to go through them each briefly. We set aside fifty thousand to assist in broadband deployment. After we set up our priorities, the, the state B funding, that, that didn't exist at the time we went through our priorities. So at the time, we were going to work with our, our local ISP, Valley Telecom, and, and try to help them in any way we could to deploy this. Um, B funding is federally uh sourced dollars that have been given. I, I think we've got a billion dollars in the state, close to a billion dollars. And they're in the process right now of deciding how they deploy it. They're going to deploy fiber everywhere they can in under or unserved areas. Greenlee County, essentially the Marinsey area and parts of Clifton have as high, highest speed of internet as you can get most anywhere. There is fiber that exists in certain parts of the county. The B funding was to identify all those areas, which is pretty much the rest of the county, that are under or unserved. We're working with uh Valley Telecom, we're working with uh CSA, and we're working with the state um B Funding Office, which is a, a subdivision of the Arizona Commerce Authority to try and not only identify, but we've also got some conflict with um funding that, that Valley Tel- Telecom already had in place. They are working on their end to essentially clear those obligations so that all of our addresses become B eligible. The, the process that everybody else is in right now that we are not is identifying which homes are under or unserved. We've already identified that. And, and thanks to a study that was done by Cego and some work done by Valley Telecom, that was a very easy process for us. Ours is now the conflict, but what that means is we have not, and there's a good chance we will not spend fifty thousand dollars to assist in broadband deployment. We have it there. Oh, let me, let me back as well. When we did that exercise, the ARPA funds, our project is revenue replacement. So if, if we got over ten million dollars in ARPA funds, then we'd had to say, we're gonna, we're gonna do this, we're gonna build a building, we're gonna do whatever we're gonna do. And we had to identify those types of projects. If you got less than ten million dollars, then you could declare all of that money was revenue replacement. So our project is revenue replacement. So even though we've identified projects here, our official project is revenue replacement. So we had to commit the money by December twenty-four. We will have, we only have two hundred seventy-one thousand dollars left. All of that money will not only have been committed, it will have been spent on the project of revenue business. That makes sense?
Yeah. Now, now Derek, s- since, since we already know uh our areas where uh we don't have sufficient broadband support, where in the process with the state are we at getting those areas where they have sufficient broadband support?
So, yeah, so just to answer that, where we're at right now is how the funding is set up. If there's other federal funding involved, it kind of locks up those areas. So right now, Valley's working with the state office to free up our locations here. Hell, but under what they call T E D funding, telephone, something funding, but a different type of federal funding. They're trying to really screen accounts out of this so that they may be eligible. Point eligible for B, then they'll put them in project areas.
That bid may, may go to Valley Telecom and may go to, if somebody else wants to come in and say, you'll build out the network, then they would own the ISPs or everything that's not, mostly all Marinsey and some parts of Clifton, not all.
Yeah, or most of those area, the area up, up north.
That are unserved?
No, it's almost all south. There's still, it's all south. You have some up north, but I mean, we're talking very few addresses. It all comes down to a budget count here.
For their addresses, they, depending on the feasibility, they may have with, with a different source like Starlink or, or some other uh you know, uh antenna to antenna, you know, air uh carrier. Um, but our biggest, big bulk of our concern is Guthrie South, um, cause Loma Linda, Verde Lee both have it. Everything's south of there. It's where we, now, there are patches. Um, there's, there's a fiber line that runs um north from the Duncan area. Um, some folks in the Apache Grove area have been able to tap into that and have fiber. Um, but you get into the York Valley and, and even in the, the homes there, it's, it's not there. So that would be the build out.
A- and I appreciate that. I mean, it, it was nice. We were headed the, the ballgame, but now how are we gonna cross the finish line?
And, and there have been, as they, as they roll this program out, there've been other wrinkles. There's, there's a bigger problem that we don't have. It's called ARDOF funding. And that was where the, the ISPs companies had already committed to federal funding and they had it built out by twenty thirty-five.
You have some of them on the north side. So that makes sure that their, their work can do it as a whole. But again, for us, there is on the north side, we're talking hundred thirty guys, it's probably affected by that, which most of them are already probably are starting. But uh, that, that's a small portion that CSA is working on. Uh, try to get that, their build out was at those one five, then it's at one seven.
I thought it was even further than that. It was thirty or so.
I mean, I'm worried that most of those will get left behind because those are those really hard.
Remote and expensive places to get it to them. For purpose of this discussion, that fifty thousand will not likely be used for, for broadband. Um, what I've done over here and, and where Renee and I got started late is some of these figures you're going to see are fairly exact. Some are fairly close and some are, are the estimates. This, this is the completed projects. This is the arena where we, we did the shoots and rebuilt the, the north end of the arena. That is an exact figure. Um, permanent GPS base, we're done except hanging a repeater on the Guthrie Tower. Um, but Reed has given me, that is our best estimate of what their final bill we've, we, we budgeted sixty-five thousand. That's a little bit under. Um I, this, this figure, the forty thousand, the twenty-five thousand are both going to far exceed what we budgeted. Um, we went through that process when it was decision time and the board agreed, let's spend the extra money, get it done. I have not moved those over because even though the buildings are up, you know, i- if you haven't had a chance, one of them, they're impressive. But they're not wired. Uh, we need four cener floor, the dance floor to, to match the, the new building size. So there's some finishing work that needs to be done and Tony's folks are working on that. Um, but not doing other projects, but they're, they're working on that. So I haven't moved on to completed column. And these figures will be substantially higher. Um, these three here, um Tony brought me into figures, a little over four, a hundred and fourteen thousand. We budgeted a hundred and twenty thousand, so we'd be slightly under budget for the, the two kitchen areas and the pair mutual um building, that was the kitchen area underneath the grandstands. Um, the court support, uh, audio visual support, that is a final figure. Um, PSPRS payoff, we have completed that with L A T C F funds that we had. Uh, we've, we've removed the medical software, um, the event tent. I think came in around ten or twelve, didn't it?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, that's close. They're here fourteen now. So, so um simply change that one right now, can. And again, we'll get an exact figure. So we, we came in under budget on that. Um, online permitting and licensing, that's, that's a, a completed figure. Uh, this was to restore sick time that was lost uh during COVID. Uh, that's been completed. The Loma Linda Park well, that figure is um pretty close. I think Pretty close. I think we exceeded it slightly. This is just on the, the, the well preparation. This does not include the work we're doing on the Loma Linda Ball Field, nor does it include the storage tanks. And the plumbing for those storage tanks that we put near that well, we're gonna uh get road water for and so forth. Premium pay, that was the first thing that we completed, that was simply, and that was allowed, is no longer allowed. Uh, you can't use those funds for that, but that was paid out right up front. Um, we talked about this one, that, that number was five hundred and ten. And we paid for an attorney to give us advice on, on uh some land we were looking at. Uh, and I, I couldn't remember last night, but I believe we spent a little bit more out of that as well. Our whole spend out of that is, is roughly twenty five, fifty thousand, I cut it in half. Uh, so we have roughly four. Yeah, four hundred and seventy two thousand and change left there. And then we have, of course, the overrun margin. We added the water tank storage to that job, that, that is done and paid for. Uh, we've got part of the part, uh, price for the plumbing and so forth, and I, I will uh get ahold of Matt and get the final tally on the cost of the tanks. Uh, we did get the broken tank, they said we can use it however we want, and so we'll deploy that where it is used best. But this gives you an idea of where we're at. Um, and it gives you an idea of the amount remaining. So. We're at about, so it's, it's one point eight four. We've spent about eight hundred ninety, so we have a little in the neighborhood of a million dollars left to spend on ARPA funding. And I'll show you where that shows up in our budget. But I wanted to, wanted to review where we've, what we've done, what we've been able to finish. Um, the projects that are not done, of course, we still have this reserve. Um, we, we did not consummate the purchase of land. Um, this has been on hold, and I, I don't wanna proceed with the record, electronic record storage until we've consulted and developed the project with bits. Something that makes sense. I think that eleven thousand dollars is probably well under what it would take to do it in efficient record storage, records management. Um, we have not, we, we've discussed a building, this is not included in the budget, this is a public works building out of the three-way. Um, again, I think this is one of those things we should look at while we have the one-time money to complete. Um. The Duncan Park. Um, point of pay services, that was to, to enable the engineer's office to take point of pay. That has been completed, that was not uh originally on our list, we, I'm not sure we've paid for it out of our, but we'll confirm that. The hundred and fifty thousand for the Duncan Park and the thirty thousand for the Duncan shade cover. That's about a hundred and eighty thousand, that will be part of an overall cost of that project. My suspicion is that, that's gonna. When I was sending them, it'd be close to a million dollars. Some of which will be done in-house, so we can cut down the actual payout, some which will be done with contractors and so forth. Um, and we'll discuss that in our meeting later. Any questions on, on the ARPA fund?
On the digital record storage, I mean. Where's bits on that? Uh, because that is something that. Yeah, I mean, that's the future and that. We need that.
It is something we need, and I think it's, it's, some of that's been taking place already. Many of the offices, you know, um, Cherry's office is pretty much all digital, County Attorney's Office is all digital. Where we struggle is, is the records that, and, and especially going backwards, uh, that the board keeps. Um, and, and it, it'll take a long or a more involved process to define how much we need done. But we have not been working out that directly, simply because we've had them on our projects, working on other tier one capital projects that, that we've had, that folks are like Spelman, the virtual servers and so forth. But we needed to find the scope of that, what we hope to accomplish. Like I said, some of the offices have already gone there, we've, we've gone there. Uh, we've started recording all of our, our purchase orders, they're all electronically stored, they're searchable. So we needed to go back and verify who we paid, when we paid, what we paid, we can do that. Whereas before, that was all paper system.
Derek, before we move on, so of that four seventy two that's earmarked under economic development. When do we, that's remaining in that bucket, that was originally anticipated to buy land, encourage. The housing development, right?
Yes.
When, because these funds have to be spent before twenty twenty six. When do we need to start looking at repurposing?
Yes.
So, two answers to the question. One, we have spent almost all of our ARPA funds. So those deadlines of the twenty, December twenty four to commit and December twenty six to spend.
Yeah.
We'll be done with that by probably the first quarter of next year. Because we're spending it for revenue replacement, that's our spend. Um, in terms of repurposing that, that roughly five hundred thousand dollars. As soon as you guys decide that we wanna do, put that money someplace else. Um. And as I, as I move on to talk about capital improvements. You'll see that, that we could repurpose it sooner rather than later and still have money to, to do something along the lines of, of housing development, I'm telling you.
Yeah.
So, but as soon as you say, hey, let's, let's, we've got this.
Do that and then get a deal through state lands.
Yeah, and where are we with state land? I, I guess that's the next question, because that was plan B.
Um, and, and Reed jumped in and helped me, we're in a typical slow dance with state land. I know that Hayden has been in contact with them. Um, our, our first objective was to try and see if we could. Uh, breathe new life into the work that a couple of previous developers had done about five years ago. Four, five years ago in that neighborhood. Um, because they had done some of the, the, the legwork, they were, I think, ready to go to auction, if I recall, that Chris Gomez. And so some of the work that is required to get a property ready, Hayden has been in contact with state land to see if any of that is still good, can it be re, you know, revitalized as opposed to start from brand new again? Um. State land is not the most quickly responsive group in state government or anywhere else. Um, I know that they're probably about half the staff that they need to, that, that they would like to have. Um. But that's where we're at. Is that a fair statement, Reed?
Yeah, broadly speaking, they're. They're much more willing to respond to an email from Super Brother Gomez than they are.
Yes.
We're, we're also waiting for another quote from the hydrologist, a hydrologist in regards to the water situation too.
Yes, uh, on the other front, what we've done is, you know, we, we, we have appropriately changed our focus after the Tana Farm situation. Where we identify water first and then land to go with it. And so in that process, uh, again, credit to Super Brother Gomez and, and along with Reed, they've been working with Cactus LLC and saying, basically. Do you have the capacity, is it a capacity to supply homes in the, in the Y area between Loma Linda and Verde Lee? Um, and, and they have uh, what's called, uh, what's the serve letter, Reed?
Will serve letter.
A will serve letter, which outlines the conditions under which they, they would do it. Part of that is making sure there's enough water. So we have, uh, we are reaching out to contractors to do what they call a tabletop uh study of hydrology, in other words, we're not. Not drilling a well, we were once quoted over a hundred thousand dollars to drill a test well in the area to see what's there, and you cannot use it once you drill it. You have to fill it back in, and we were reluctant to do that, the orders were reluctant to do that. But, but there are people out there who will study every well in the area, and it's not just like me when I pull it up, I know that the wells as well. But they can learn from those wells, things that I wouldn't know what I'm looking for. So we are contacting contractors to try and get an idea of what water resources are available. Uh, Cactus LLC, would they use that along with their existing water resources and the possibility of blending the two systems? To, to give us an answer, you know, we think we could support twenty, thirty, fifty, a hundred, two hundred homes, whatever it may be. Um, so that's where we're at on, on the water and our interactions with state land. I don't think we're gonna be in a position to purchase any land, and, and frankly, I hope we never have to purchase any land. It would be nice if we could do all of the legwork necessary that a developer says. I wanna do this, because if we get involved, it becomes so much more clunky to try and dispose of that land. Because we've gotta do everything either by the lot or by the forty acre lot, we've gotta do it by auction, and it's. We're just not built to do that kind of stuff. Can we? Probably. Should we? No. One of the other things that's happening, and Gary and I attended a, uh, like I said, a presentation just a couple of weeks ago. Is that the rules for how you use economic development money, particularly when it comes to encouraging development. Two court cases in the recent two, three years have really put some real restrictions on that. Where if we do something, we've got to get a dollar for dollar return. Now, obviously, if we buy it and we sell it for the same amount we bought it for, we've met that criteria. But in terms of tax breaks or, or other things like that, we've gotta get a dollar for dollar return, and this may develop much more difficult. Because Arizona's gift laws in the constitution, state constitution. That is literally a teeny tiny sliver of what, what we've had to learn, but that's the gist of it. It's gonna be harder for us to maneuver in that space.
And they also fall under the criteria of assured water assurance. You have to get a certificate that you have water, supply whatever for a hundred years.
Assured, not, not a guarantee, certainly the AMA's, that's a, that's a hard, much more strict, and Reed would be more of an expert on that than I am, but in, if you're not in an, in an active management area, which we are not. Then, then that criteria is less. Now, we have anecdotal evidence that, that doesn't mean they're not watching. Um, we know that Super Regulance's uh family drilled a well, they were giving this long survey, how many kids, how many toilets, how many acres of garden, I mean. They're, they're trying to count for every drop in the state, every drop of water. But the first step is to see if there's enough water there. Our well that we drilled is an important data point. We didn't know how much, how, how deep. Uh, but that's a good well, produced forty two gallons a minute. We've got a, a, a well, a pump on it that restricts it to thirty five, but that's a good well. And so if that's an indicator, then, then that's something that will help, and that was a good data.
Now that you're talking about that, well, there, where's, where, where does the Loma Linda park upgrades coming into this picture here?
They are not on the ARPA funding list, they're on the capital improvements tier one list. And so that, that's, work that's being done there is being billed to the capital improvements.
Okay.
So you recall, and I, and I was gonna try and put up the bill, it'll take me a while to find it. When we have our, our tier one projects, if you recall, some of those projects were funded out of the general fund, some were special revenue funds, some were ARPA funds, some were. State grants for airport things or other things. There's a blend of, of funding revenue sources, and that'll blend into when we start talking about our capital improvement program. But essentially, because we've been using other, other people's money to do some of our projects. We've been able to bank some money in our capital improvement. I'll talk about that next, unless you have more questions about this.
Nope.
Thank you.
Um.
Derek, I think it's worth noting, just remember, we're talking about our, our, our ARPA funds, that that deadline does no longer apply. That money has already been spent, effectively on the books.
Good.
So on the books, it's been spent. It's been spent, so the deadline is irrelevant to our side, so.
Right.
Start this one a little bit bigger, so hopefully they can see until they decide to sweep it.
It's gone, no, it's all, it doesn't exist, it's nice, they can sweep it again.
Can I have that in writing?
No.
And you laugh, they, they.
Yes, they talk, it is talking about it right now.
Oh, yeah.
About reclaiming unspent funds, which is why you'll see that we are prioritizing the spending of those funds, even though ARPA has been spent. We wanna get rid of that money first. The LAT CF, we wanna get rid of that money next. Um. Thank you, Austin. I think that is an important point that needs to be recognized. Okay, we're gonna move now to what we call Schedule D. So in, in our budgets. We, um. Here. We transfer some money out of the general fund or into the general fund to, to fund different uh projects. So for example, we come up here, this is the one point eight we receive from FMI each year. We transfer that from Fund One Ninety Nine into the general fund. Normally that figure there is one, one eight million. We transfer, for example, this year, one hundred and forty five thousand out of the general fund into. The probation, what, what we put into general services to support probation. Um, we, we transfer money into the, to the public health services as our, our required maintenance of effort and other things. This is that, that money, that lost donation fund. This is going back up in here to the general fund as well. Here's where I want to focus right now, though, these two pink squares. So over the last three years, we have been putting money out of the general fund. Into two different funds. One is our debt service uh fund. So when we buy a piece of equipment or cars, we pay for those installment payments out of Fund Eight Hundred. Over the last three years. Into the debt service fund, and in fiscal year twenty two, we put seven hundred thousand dollars in that fund. In fiscal year twenty three, we put one million. Fiscal year twenty four, we put seven hundred thousand, so we are, we put in two point four million dollars into that fund over the last three years. What we effectively did was take those good years, think of Joseph and the, and the storing of the, of the grain in Egypt. We took those good years, we put that in our debt service fund. This year, I'm gonna suggest we don't put anything in. We don't need it. We've got about two and a half million dollars in that fund. And we can pay all of our current. Ongoing installment payments, we can pay the lease payments out of, you know, for the, the enterprise cars that we purchased. And we can pay next year's installment payments all out of that fund without having to contribute to it in the current year.
Then how do you book it?
How do we book it?
Yeah.
We will, we will bill against it. I mean, it's, it's.
It has to, it has to show up somewhere.
It does, and it shows up on our Schedule E. And it's uh as, as our expense fund.
Okay.
Right?
I, okay.
The same is true with our.
Pay or handle it.
If I haven't said enough aloud enough, I can't tell you how much I appreciate what he does do. Um, and I.
Yeah.
And it was these two funds that really had us baffled, uh, had me baffled until Renee and Austin sorted them out, and, and so the others, capital improvements. So over the last three years, FY twenty two, we booked one point five million in capital improvements. We booked two million into uh capital improvements in FY twenty three and two million last year. So we're at approximately five point, I think our, our balance is five point seven. So we're not gonna book anything in there, out of the general fund this year. Moreover. If we book, if we expense anything out of that, it will be minimal. Why? Because we're gonna build things under ARPA and our LAT CF funds. So we'll, we'll prioritize those, and we've got right around three million to spend there. We, we'll have to spend pretty quick to burn through three months. But we're not gonna, we're not gonna contribute to, nor will we likely touch our capital, our official capital improvements fund in FY twenty five. That explains the higher budget balance, and it explains why we've got the money to do it. Again. In those really good years, we were able to book that and essentially put it into a capital project savings account. Treat it like a savings account. We certainly, we, we booked to spend it, but a lot of the projects we worked on weren't spent out of this, they were spent out of other things. Some of our projects, uh, the Loma Linda Ball Field is gonna turn out to be more expensive than we had originally thought. If you have not taken the chance to go out there and look at it, please do. Uh, Tony and David's crew working together have really got that, you almost can't recognize. In fact, if you go out there, you'll see an optical illusion, it's kinda weird, cause you stand next to the field and it looks like the home plate's way up there. And, and it's not, it's, it's leveled within an inch, isn't it? Inch or two? And so, um, but they've really transformed it. But it has cost us a bit more than we anticipated. There'll be some plumbing that will allow us to run a, a stand pipe as well as uh water that field. Um, and so, like I said, if you had a chance to stroll out there and have a look at it, it's gonna be very, very nice. But because we have put away extra money in the last three years where we've had lots of money coming in. We, one, don't need to touch it in the capital improvements, and we've got a good reserve there, over five million dollars. We will begin to use that in subsequent years when our ARPA and LAT CF funds are, are gone. That make sense?
Yep.
Okay. Um.
Derek, in.
Yes.
In that line too, and. Have we visited with. Report and. Got an economic outlook for the next few years. Because right now, I, I, I mean, and this is great, what you've done, but. We've gotta look.
We gotta.
In the future, and we've gotta have a sustainable budget. And right now, we're, we're. We're benefiting from the outlook that we had in the past years. And so we need to make sure that we're gonna take care of ourselves. And so we need to make sure that we're gonna take care of ourselves, that'll carry on into the future. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, let's say, for example, that the new normal is four hundred and twenty five thousand dollars a month shared sales tax. If that becomes a new normal, the next five hundred, then we're gonna have to choke down our budget to live within that. So this this budget allows us, what's that?
That's not the new normal.
I know. It it won't be, but 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 that's.
I agree, yeah, yeah.
And so um and 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 Austin, have you filled in the blanks here? But I know that in the last uh community partnership, uh community partnership meeting held last week. Um the general manager up there, Bobby talked about, we're gonna go back to simply and basically produce copper. We read that as we're gonna be cutting costs um in how copper is produced. And and so um yes, I I've had some of those discussions, but um.
Had to ask, Derek.
No, no, I I I don't think, and and when I've had some of those discussions, um the answers I get back are somewhat vague and nuanced. But but they're giving us signals that 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 margin between cost of production and cost and and copper price will probably increase. I agree with Supervisor Campbell. I don't think four twenty five is gonna be the the new normal.
And we need, I I mean, there's nothing assurance, but.
No. Because you can't look at copper price. I mean, you have no idea what copper price.
And I understand that, but we can't control this side of it.
Yes.
But 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 our our budgeting conservatively has helped us and 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 certainly, this is not as bad as it once used to be. Um we still have, you remember the the budget tool we worked up last week? We've got lots of tools to help us. I mean, if we have two or three years of lean years, it has always been this way. That that there are dips and valleys in in revenues due to what happens in the copper market, whether that's cost of production or or price of copper. Or or pandemics, or labor strikes, or whatever it is. That's that's something that we are, if you will, uniquely experienced. I can tell you, I visit with so many colleagues who are um not as used to that side. They're struggling with it. My my counterpart in Grand County says, we should be getting a whole lot more money. Why aren't we getting money? And and it is a very legitimate question, and if you've been, you know, involved in this for for decades as we have, the answers are kind of obvious. If your economy is alight on farming, which is very steady, um then it doesn't make sense to you. But nevertheless, I I agree, Supervisor Lance, you've always asked, in fact, twenty years after I'm dead, I'm gonna still hear Supervisor go or Supervisor Lance say, is it sustainable? And I will answer, I sure hope so. Um in event, uh but there therein is the what what Austin and Renee identified last week, what we've worked through to make sense of why why we were so far out of balance. A lot of it's because we have booked and we're not going to book it this year. Okay? With that, um I'm gonna go briefly to Schedule E. I've got this blue highlighted. Uh we've also adjusted um the sheriff's budget. We know now that the appeal will take place. The sheriff has filed a notice of appeal, and so we will work in the next week, week and a half to try and shore up what our projected cost of the appeal will be in the next fiscal year, but that's that's gonna continue. Some of these others, I highlighted just one. There are still some numbers that we don't get till the end of May, early June. Some of those numbers come from A D O R. So I I say that simply to emphasize, you're gonna see some small movements in some of these some of these numbers on the expense side. Um I've got these two highlighted because therein is where we will, where we will build things from. As we've talked before, as we do so, and and we're not going to task Tony, so he can read a little bit better. If if we undertake big projects, some of this, we've got the money to contract out and get them done. For example, if we end up building a a metal building again, there's a good chance we're not gonna build it ourselves. We're gonna hire the expert in the area to come and do that. We will want to develop a more modest capital improvements project list this year for tier one. We're gonna try and get done. Not because um we can't fund it, but we wanna be careful that we don't completely convert our maintenance department into a construction company. And then, of course, we will need to plan in years' future how we manage the maintenance of the things we build, the things we already have and the things we build. Um some of that, the better we build it upfront, will reduce the maintenance ongoing. But some things, if you if you plant grass, you gotta mow it. Uh you gotta water it. And and other things, like if you build a metal building, um you're not painting every so often. But you're, you know, there's there's just some things that you invest in at the right beginning, it costs us to maintain. With that, I'll go back to kind of where we started. We are currently in balance. Like I say, I expect there to be some movement in there because some of those figures are not permanent until we get some figures from outside the sources. Uh but I will tell you, this exercise has been good for us. It's been good for us on staff. It's been good to to look at where the where the dials are, where we can make adjustments to our budget. But more importantly, it's been good for us to go through each budget line by line, say, where can we afford tight our belt? What can we not afford? We have, we have really not cut elections or recorders off, especially on the on the election side, because we can't afford this election year to be skinny on that budget if if and who knows what may become. We've got to have them prepared. We've gotta be prepared for whatever may fall out of the sky during the election or after the election. But.
Especially after.
Especially after, um some of some of the the rhetoric has already begun about not trusting outcomes. And if that's the case, that that generally portends litigation. And uh we have done an excellent job. Our our two offices that run elections have run so clean. The the things, the the one issue that I remember that we worried about in the twenty two cycle was so small that even if we sent out a press release, no one would come and ask us about it. And and we have run such clean elections and and done so well. But I will tell you, other counties that also ran clean elections got attention, not because of their election, but because people wanted a place to fight. And so uh we will keep our elections clean. We'll make sure our folks are staff so that we keep it clean. But we'll be still prepared for the worst and hope for the best. With that, that that's my budget work session for today. Any other questions?
Oh, just.
Oh, by the way, this is built on our on our TNT tax rate.
That that's what gets kind of what I wanted.
Let's go there.
Yeah, T the T the increase.
And and the salary, yeah.
How what?
Okay, so.
Choose to build that number, you know what I mean?
Yes, good point. So that that is our TNT uh property tax rate. That is, that is the same rate that that we started at at the beginning, and and this budget accounts for it. It accounts for a five percent uh increase across the board on employment. That's how we built the budget. Um when we were uh when we were building all the individual budgets, we built them at five percent. Um it accounts for the increase, although it's slight um in healthcare costs to the county. One of the big areas where we saved quite a bit was our contribution rate for the public safety retirement system. Having paid that down, this is the year we start to see the savings, and it'll go on forever. Uh we paid it up what we thought was a hundred percent. The market did us not a favor. We are actually at ninety six, ninety seven percent. Which is effectively, for actuarial purposes, fully paid up. And so our contribution rate is way down on that. One thing is that's still expensive, and it's likely to be that way, is our elected officials retirement fund. That contribution still runs in the seventy percent range. In fact, right now, what they are proposing is that even as that fund becomes more healthy, that they do not reduce the contribution. And the reason why is there's, there aren't very many ways to make that fund healthy. So if you just continue to pay a higher rate, it will build that fund up to to get our expensive debt paid down on that quicker. But those are some factors that are built into this. The elected officials retirement is built in. Uh excuse me, the elected officials increase is built into this budget. What other, what other factors that we've built in, gentlemen? Yeah, I think, you know, that that's, it it doesn't count for all those things.
On on the fuel, uh when when I say fuel, uh gas, diesel, uh electricity, all that. How much did you have to build in for that? I I I know it's been going like this, but it's it it it, the slope is is going up.
I I, as a percentage, I would say it's probably a neighborhood of about ten percent.
Okay, I I just.
If we looked at those budgets and and in a lot of it, especially the large ones, I I, for example, building and maintenance, um other those things. We've already spent our budget for the year. So we had some margins in some other areas of budgets. We're not, we're not broke, we're not insolvent. But those utility bills, yeah, at at ten months into the year, we were pretty much at our budget. So so we increased, you know, roughly ten, ten fifteen percent in next year's budget to account for that.
I don't see those going down, it's. Yeah.
It's, and fuel, I I read just yesterday that California is doing some things to try and save the environment that'll end up costing us, because most of our fuel, a lot of our fuel in the state comes from California. But yes, we are, we are, we've built up budgets for uh fuel consumption. We built up uh budgets for utility consumption, all of those.
But Derek, if if we run out at at ten months, it that that means you had to increase that by a sixth. So ten percent doesn't seem like it's high enough. Well, am I figuring wrong?
I and and I see my my tips, I haven't done a percent of that. Yeah, that's that's not exactly.
You guys is.
And and not all of them have run out of budget, but but all of them are higher than we expect. Our earning rate, if you will, on to those line items is higher than we expected. So we we've done our best to account for that, and we've actually discussed that as we're picking our big budgets. The three of us, and what do we project that as?
And really, most of those, it's the big budget. It's most of the smaller, but it's have, they've had tuition in there, they they managed fine. They ran on a higher side, but they still would. And the forecasted primary sector is at the TNT rate or below the TNT?
Are at the TNT.
At the TNT.
Yes, and so so the eight, um let me blow it up here.
Yeah, so we'll have to have a hearing.
No, we will not have to have a.
If you exceed it.
Oh, oh, if you exceed it, oh, yeah.
That is at the line.
Right, okay.
That is at the line.
Oh, that's kind of what I, that's what I want.
Yes, that that is at the line. If we stay with that line, no, no, here is, yes, just don't fall on. If we go to point eight oh three seven, we're having a hearing.
Right.
So, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, and and I agree with.
So I'm glad you phrased the question correctly, because sometimes these numbers, I've I've played with them so many times, I I I forget what is obvious, or isn't obvious.
And and Derek, we're we're dropping the uh the twenty five cents, we just see that's the flood control.
This is the uh public health services district.
And and you dropped that.
We didn't drop it that, well, that's our TNT rate.
Okay, that's TNT, okay.
Yeah, because the maximum by law you can go is twenty five and and.
We've done that.
We've done that. I'm going to just see what happens. We put twenty five in there.
Actually, it would be lower.
Five.
Not twenty five, that would be quite a tax rate.
Many Christmas.
And the reason I I wanna say that is um where'd that show up? I haven't got that calculation here. The reason I say that is, um we're purchasing an ambulance in likely FY twenty five. And again, we are limited in how much we can raise. And so we will go back and and look at that, see if it's worth having a TNT hearing, get that little extra money. I I'm concerned, Renee pointed this out to me a few months ago, that our reserves in the public health services district are dwindling. Um and that's because you're limited in how much you can tax. There's only so much you can tax. It raises a little bit, but our expenses have gone up. Um and then you'd be taking hit like a an ambulance. Uh now Matt Bollinger approached me yesterday and and said there may be some grant funding we can apply for to help subsidize a good chunk of that ambulance, which would be very helpful. Um but those are, those are uh things that we've been watching to try and make sure, and leave it twenty four seventy five. We wouldn't get a whole lot more out of it.
And and Derek, we're talking about uh buying just a chassis and and moving the box.
In future, yes.
In the future, though.
The ambulance that's coming next year, we ordered two years ago. Um that'll be a fully equipped uh brand new machine. And and like I say, we literally ordered it two years or more ago. Uh we got approval in FY twenty three, ordered it, and we're just now, is it, uh uh we got a share, is it still coming?
Yes.
Okay, good. Any event, so uh and then then we are on the lookout and trying to see if we can finance the chassis, which won't won't be zero cost, but we're hoping that would be a smaller cost as we turn over. We'll still eventually occasionally have to buy a brand new ambulance, but hopefully not every other year.
So it seems generic. We we booked that, and yet there's been two price increases since we boarded it.
Yeah.
And and.
It's, it it's it's different.
Is is the process, sorry, is the process still the same if you exceed on the secondary tax rate? You you exceed the TNT rates, still the same hearing and all that stuff?
Yes.
Even if the primary doesn't exceed it?
Well.
Secondary does.
Correct.
Right.
Then you hold it, because essentially, the public health services district and the flood control district are separate legal entities. You happen to sit at the board on all three county, uh flood and flood. But yes, I mean, and and I will check and make sure that is the case, but you would hold a hearing just on those two.
Right.
So for example, the TNT, the max on the flood control district um is likewise uh I believe it's twenty five percent, that's the max you can go by law. As our, as our property values have stagnated well, a little inclined a bit, is um we're down to nineteen cents on that. And so, so yes, we we would, I'm almost certain, have the same hearing process, but just for those smaller tax rates.
But based on this, based on this budget, based on what we've reviewed, the overall combined tax rate will be low.
Yes, it will, it'll be, yes, by about four one hundredths of a penny.
Right, I mean, no, that's.
Right.
It's a good thing, but it's.
It's better than poking out with a sharp stick the other direction.
Right.
But yes, and and we will likely come in again as as the low, low cost leader for property taxes.
Yeah. Okay.
And 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 you've stated this several times, but we're one of three counties. A lot of those other counties are seeing increases in their revenue.
They are, and and ours is the lowest drop of all. We know why, but ours is the lowest drop of all. Most is seeing in increases and and it be, it's because other counties have a much more diverse economic uh base. And so as the Arizona economy has has continued to thrive, and it it's one of the two or three best economies post pandemic in the in the country on a statewide basis. And it has continued to thrive. If you've got Walmarts and Costco's and manufacturing, you know, sector and and you've got uh electric cars and all that kind of stuff being built, it's gonna reflect that. Ours, we don't care as much as Arizona's economy, as much as we do the global economy for copper.
Was definitely different than last week's discussion.
Yeah, yeah. It is, and and believe me, we're gonna spend some time going over this again to make sure that that we have not had any errors. We will, we will review our budgets again, make sure they're accurate. We will fill out the rest of the uh, complete the special revenue funds and have that ready. I don't believe we will need a budget work session uh next week, as we had thought. We'll have everything ready for a budget work session in early June. And at that point, we should be able to present to you with with a couple of weeks to think about it, a a complete budget. And and have it ready for tentative adoption of the eighteen.
Good work.
It it has been a different process this year. It's it's, I used to joke that it's easy when you don't have any money, because everybody gets told no, and that is easy. In the pandemic year, when we thought things were gonna be tough, it was a fairly easy budget. We just said no to everything. We tried to keep a zero flat budget. Some, if these do what they call zero based budget, every year you build a brand new. Um, some, if these do what they call zero based budget, every year you build a brand new. Um, for us, this works well, and and we've had more money, it's it's been good. But the exercise of planning for lower revenues has been a healthy, if not somewhat painful, process for us. And and uh, it it'll it allowed us, it forced us to look at some things uh, that we hadn't had to look at recently. And so uh, that was, that's been a very helpful process. It's helped us identify some areas where we were perhaps budget structurally a little bit weak that we will work on over the next few years to to shore up. And that's that's it. Took a long time.
Great, no, it's good. Once again, thank you, thank you, thank you. And if that's uh, any questions, Jim? Okay, if not, we'll go to uh, agenda item five.
Um, agenda item five is is review the the fairgrounds. Um, if you turn on the lights and and we'll probably gather around this table here. Um.
Okay.
We take the five minutes.
Better to pull the table in a minute.
Take a five minute recess. Be back at nine twenty six.
Why?
We're not that far, I guess. And you'll get, you'll get yours recording? So, um, if you recall, about a month, month and a half ago, we we sat down and we had two questions for the board. Which part of the fairground do you want to put fields and how many fields? And and then we promised you once we did that exercise that we would build out some options and and what we thought would work and and taking into account some things that have come up in that discussion. So we we chose, you chose the northeast part of the fairgrounds, um. And we chose um, three fields at that time. So we built that out. Um, and what we did is is we had uh, myself, Reed, David and Tony uh, sit down and and prove the idea and 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 make sure we hadn't forgotten any obvious. Once we did that, we then brought in a bigger group. I was not part of that group on purpose. Uh, funny, people don't talk as much when I'm in the room, so I didn't show up. But we included in that Lindsay, uh, we included, uh, who are some of the other players we had in there?
Uh, Justin on there because Christian could be.
Austin. And we we expanded that once again to say, hey, let's let's vet these ideas and make sure that that they work. And we've we've come up with one thing's a pretty good plan now. The decision is yours, obviously. Um, but we've got a couple of different things. We're going to start um, over here on this one. So, um. As you recall, if you've been down with, there's a space between the South Annex and our and our lay down yard, or excuse me, our fuel station and shop. Right now it's being used as a lay down yard. There's there's all kinds of things that are there. Uh, David, uh, Munus and his crew is slowly removing that, but we own the parcel in between the highway and the fairgrounds uh, footprint. So we own that little, right over here is the uh, the fire station and ambulance crew, uh, and and Dunk Fire District owns that, but we own a triangle that would connect this to Highway seventy five. So one of the options we looked at was bring the road in between here, um. Add some parking here and here on either side of it. Wouldn't be much, but it would help on those days when we've got a lot of use of the South Annex. There could be some overflow parking there. Um. This is the three fields. Essentially, the fourth corner is where the amenities would be built. With a focus, and this this doesn't necessarily reflect, but there would be a a centralized uh, restroom, uh, announcer station, whatever, whatever we have in here. Close to that would be a playground. We would relocate the playground from over this part closer to the fields. This would allow parents to keep an eye on the little kids as well as watch their child play softball, baseball, whatever here in the area. Uh, a splash pad, sand volleyball, pickleball courts, and then ramadas uh, for picnicking and so forth in this area. Um, my personal preference would be have this grass infield, but what's more important is the structures. Uh, this would allow, um, additional parking to access the amenities without having to cross a road to get there. You'll also see that on the outset of the fields, uh, Reed's provided for some parking onto the fields out here. Um, it's a short walk from parking to set up, you know, um, lawn chairs or whatever if you want to sit the outfield out here.
Some benches out there or something.
But so, yeah, we can we can put some seating up here, um. None of this includes, this is just infrastructure, doesn't include eventual landscaping of trees or whatever else, um. These are all uh, penciled in at three hundred feet, which would allow for baseball uh, or softball, and we could bring in temporary fencing for little league or or softball fields as it as it may be. Uh, we would do one or, one or two as little league fields or softball fields, so there'd be grass on the field on some and not grass on on the others. Don't know, but this is in terms of layout. The road would go this way and then go up to the dry camping. Uh, this would become a an inroad. One of the things we talked about is the ability to move traffic on big events in one gate and out another, so you don't have this cross traffic going in and out uh, out of gates. Um, right now, the uh, the carnival tends to set up in this area. This is our exhibit building, um, our fan stand, dance floor, um, other buildings out here. Uh, this is the southern part of the track, which would eventually be used for additional uh, rodeo livestock parking. Uh, this area next to the arena, we would, we would prepare for um, pull through parking for, um, rodeo related, you know, equipment, trucks, trailer and so forth. Um, the area here would be, would be developed into parking for uh, fair. Um, this parking here can be used to access the ball fields. We want to make sure there's some parking so that if the family brings little kids, we're not worried about kids wandering back and forth across the room on the ticket. This is drawn in this neat bubble shape because the position of the arena is is one of the things we need to think through, um. Let me show you why. And and the reason we wanted to do this as this is because as we as we learned in our last work session, that track tends to focus what we think about. But if you take these same things and overlay them on the existing map, if you rotate the arena slightly, where it's a more north-south, you square off this parking here. If you, but it also would cut into, um, some of this parking that may be used for rodeo and agriculture. So you take parking out of here, or you take parking out of here, depending on how this is rotating. Does that make sense? Um, but this is how how it overlays on the existing uh, footprint, if you will.
Those are areas that you cleared out.
Correct.
Right, and here's the road, you can see there.
Yep, so this this area would be cleared out, um, and access, like I said, we own roughly about here, we own this triangle, the county does. So access to the highway would be this direction. This offers some advantages, it offers some disadvantages.
So so this would be a like a four way, I mean, this is, this would be about the same place as Chaparral.
Correct.
And so.
A A D O will appreciate if it's directly across.
And it has to be at a ninety so you can see.
We have great, great sight distances here unlike in other areas in the county, so um, if it's built up you know, to to level, we've got room to do that so that the traffic's not coming up the highway at a at an angle.
Yeah, and and you've got room to do that.
Yes.
Because that is quite a drop there.
It is, and 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 it's the same as we go down here, you know.
Anyplace, it's all all along here, it's a drop.
Correct. So that's, that's the the plan that we worked on. As Reed pointed out, there was um, remarkable un- unanimity in the group that we assembled about about this plan, but there's some options. And the option was, one of the biggest is that if we brought the road in where it currently exists, it would not be difficult. This corner of the of the shop area down there is used primarily for storage of old equipment. So so this could be cleaned out, this fence relocated, um. We're still going to clean this up as a lay down yard and move that stuff that's still salvable and usable to a lay down yard to have the landfill. Uh, but this would be the other, and this this comes in at the current location, um, it it offers some advantages. Um.
Wh- what's the difference in parking in this layout and that layout? I see a lot more parking here than in here.
This could all be developed into parking. It is less likely to be used as much, but this could still be uh, developed in the parking and perhaps a little bit more because there's not a road in it. It does cut down on your on your parking here a little bit, but probably not so much that it that it really uh, ruins the purpose.
And it.
Closer to your amenity, so.
And be parked here, you're just crossing the road, right?
Yeah, correct.
Wherever you're going.
Right. And and like I say, if you increase where you have enough parking here, of course, the wells are not movable, those aren't optional. Um, but if you increase parking in this area, um, then yes, you have more more access, um, for using the amenities without crossing the road. I know that was something Lindsay had raised, that that when you have people crossing the road, that's.
Did anybody see in the group, this see a a reason to go with like this layout versus this layout? This layout just seems to to be the choice, uh, it was there a reason?
To be honest with you.
It didn't beneficial on us?
The entire group was was partial to this from when we began.
No, I I I wasn't.
No, I meant, no, I meant the the location of the road only.
Oh, okay, okay.
Every.
Just didn't start with that option. So it's not that any of your working committee necessarily is moved up. At least emphatically that one is better than the other. That's just the first one that we like to add.
That below it, how the road wraps out, that was one of those things, how do you keep that separation? Right, so people where their horses aren't having to cross the road right every time because they're parked over here.
Mm-hmm.
Keep the road on the outside of kind of the population, that everything's.
Yeah.
To the inside. You know, and that's kind of some of that thought with how that road wraps out.
Let me talk about one other thing we considered, um. I I spent some time yesterday looking around at other county, um, fairgrounds, um. And Lindsay will know this better, I do. I looked at Apache, Navajo, Graham, Cochise, um, many have a secondary arena. Um, few are are connected or close. They're often a little bit distant. Grand County, for example, there's there's a fair amount of distance between their secondary arena and their primary arena. Um, some have their entire arena area fenced, um, some have them mostly fenced. A couple don't have them necessarily fenced at all. One of the things that we have grown used to in Green County is that this inside track here creates a natural barrier. So if if you lost a horse or whatever, um, you know, they're somewhat contained. Um, however, this could also be um, the the same purpose could be achieved with a fence, you know, that that comes here and and so forth, so you contain that. Um, like I say, some some areas have that, some don't, that that containing barrier, if you will. Uh, it does not appear to be critical to most rodeo arena development areas, although some have. I think Navajo County, for example, they've got a fence that runs on two sides. One appears to be a large gate and at the other end, there's just this big gap. Um, and so uh, others, uh, Graham County's two arenas are are inside of a common fence. Uh, I believe Cochise County just doesn't have any barrier fence at all. And so, um, it's something to consider. It's something that that could be planned around as well, uh, that containment type of thing.
But later.
But this barrier has never been used to because animals and people are all this area over here, they're together all the time. Every road, there's horses here, there's there's livestock, all this area and mixed with people. That has never kept animals and people. That has never kept animals and people separate.
To those who are participating, and Lindsay, again, I'm gonna rely on you, but to those who participate, there's always been the people-horse interaction, and that's what they do, they get on them and ride them and chase cows and so forth.
But these are general public or.
But to the extent that we can separate spectators from participants, that's a good thing. That's a good thing, I mean, I myself, when I was a kid, we rode some horses, but I I would be lying to suggest I'm some kind of a horseman, I'm not. And so um, and if you've got, if my level of experience or less, you probably ought not be in this area. Watching, great, but but uh I think to the extent that we can minimize spectator and participant interaction, that's probably a good thing. You agree, Lindsay?
I agree, where it comes up is on our insurance applications. And so our county insurance actually during fair, we have a pro rodeo or collegiate rodeo, anything that has large stock, we have to buy additional insurance. And so on those additional insurance forms, you have to mark where your seating is, where where the spectators are, if there's a barrier, what type of barrier? You have to put what the structure's made out of, whether it's wood or whether it's metal. And so having a barrier has helped us, I know that was an issue with um mudrags and stuff that we had to have. Seagull barriers and they had to be so many feet off, same thing, so they want it. They want to separate an area for your spectators and for your people. So this year, what we did for our junior rodeos and stuff is to try to keep the horses on. This side down, it didn't keep everybody, but we put up stands to where people could sit in here and be closer. But not have as much interaction with a twelve-hundred-pound animal.
And and junior rodeo is a great example, because sometimes you've got a sixty-pound kid on top of twelve-hundred-pound animal. And uh they're learning, but they're not there yet. So so my my point being is that the barriers are important, but they can be planned around. In a smaller space, a more defined space, um I don't know that keeping this. Because when you do, you you've taken a big chunk of your of your overall um campus, if you will, and and essentially made it off limits. So. Um, I I would say at this point, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but but at this point, this model is is perhaps our favored um. Recommendation from the from the group. Um, but there's nothing on that that can't be moved or done differently. Um, we we took the direction from the board on a on a three-field northeast location, and then we kind of built out the ideas that had come up during the conversations into it.
I I recollect that I was. Two fields, not a third. Or. I I can't see that third field. That's a lot of maintenance, that's, I don't think, I don't think they'll, that the they're gonna utilize all three of those fields. Uh, I personally, and that that takes away from this, from this area here, it tightens it up more. I don't I don't know, I don't think all the people that should be here are are not here. Where where's David Manute, why is he not here?
David, David was an active part in our discussions, and and he he raised those issues as well. We we took our direction from from the 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 final indication we we got from the board. I believe it was Supervisor Campbell suggested three, I you were pushing for four and. And uh we all read it that that we should go northeast three fields, but. Supervisor Gomez, that's why you're here again, you're the decision makers. And and if it's three fields, four fields, two fields, no fields, that's that's your call.
I I I just think that the folks that 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 run the show over there, Tony, Lindsay, David. Have have major input in this situation and.
And they have.
I I'd like to hear what they have to say as far as these three fields. I I can see two, but I can't see three. And I, and that's how I lent it that day, I said two, maybe three, but I was not.
And David. When when we had the schools involved, hey, I I honestly, I wanted four fields. Uh, becau- and 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 right here with three fields, I think the school's gonna use. I think the school will will with their junior high program and the varsity pro, they will use our fields, because I'm not seeing a whole lot of progress there, and I know that. But I know I got one shot at this, David, and. I would, I I I'm gonna be a big advocate for for three fields.
I think the three fields, I mean, I think if you build it, they'll come, I mean, if you have, in front of a little league and everything else, I mean, I I think they'll be utilized, but they'd utilize it all the time, no. But to have it there, I mean, for expected growth, I mean, it'd be. Building homes all through there, I mean, our population's gonna double, I mean. Um, all the good stuff, right? That, you know, what, if you if you build it, you can utilize, I'd rather not underbuild it and then have to try to think about how to do that later or put parking over here than say. Dang, you know, five years from now, when you, ten years from now, we say, gosh, we should add another field, but um. I don't know, that's.
It's easier to scrap a field and repurpose it for something else than it is to to scrap, say, a parking area or other infrastructure and scrap it to build a field.
I I and I guess part of my my issue is that. I I honestly don't believe that there's gonna, that that they're gonna, that they're gonna hold uh. On those three fields, that they're gonna hold tournaments when they have all the amenities over here, and. Also because. The Loma Linda Field, which is, I mean, a long time, should have been completed and hasn't been completed, we're just starting to work it up. That's the only field in this district that anyone has to go and 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 now that it's being built, because I've been getting phone calls. Left and right, it's about time that this is happening. The the fields in Ward's Canyon, you know, I. Was after David to go and clean those up this year, because people were calling me and saying, hey, we gotta, we don't have a place to practice. Like Clinton School's football field, you know, is is off limits, they they let them use it to. Play soccer and practice soccer, the baseball field that was in that in that high school, they did a good bit. So I think that. That we should even continue with the Ward's Canyon field over here and finish up one of those of the two that are there. So that gives this district two fields where people can go and and play ball, practice and so on and so forth. I just don't think that that, and that's my personal opinion, I don't think it's if you're gonna get the people. Over there to go play tournaments. And 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 I'm not saying that it's not gonna happen, there might be a tournament, one or two, uh.
David, I respect, I I respect you immensely, but. I know I got one shot at this, and I'm not gonna deny. Our county an opportunity, because i- if we don't build this now, it'll never get built. And I truly believe that, and we've got an opportunity here to make this nice. And I'm not willing, I I'm gonna fight hard.
I I.
To make that, and I don't blame you, and I don't blame you. I see, I see more this area right here to accommodate accommodate the kids.
They don't doubt, they don't doubt that park over here.
With all the amenities. Eliminate this field and build this one right.
And and I, if you guys chime in, if there's anybody else that thinks like.
And and I will let you, I'm I'm not gonna cut that sharp, certainly here, um but but we have included the the major players. At several touch points along this this line, like I say, some of those meetings, I specifically did not attend, so as to foster a more robust discussion. Um, that's all you can get, we can try to consider all that, but please, if there's something else you have to add, certainly do.
Well, since since we last met, I have found out a few more things that makes me a little hesitant, that that's. I don't want to deter anybody, I think there needs to be a decision made, but do we have the water to feed the three fills was the question that came up, because. I found out about the level, not pretty, see what we needed, so that's my question about the three fills, can I maintain it with the water?
Take care of a little more.
Our storage in that area will be increased as well.
Okay, I'm just asking because what happened last, because Holly runs out of water every week. And she's only taking care of one fill, but I did ask in the storage tanks, she's using fifteen gallons every two days. And so I was trying to figure out if we're running out with.
Oh, fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand, sorry. And so I didn't know, okay, if the one fill is using everything what we have and it's parched, like, it's not getting what it needs. Um, I just wanted to make sure that, I wanted to look at if we build it, I want it to be the best that we have. So that was my question, but the usage is between the arena and the park area during baseball season, and yet the ball fields get used, but. The the park is the area that the people are really using it, wanting to use and. Maybe that they don't have shade, so. Those were my my things that people have said that I've picked up on working in the area.
We do the dry camp down here, are we taking out these jockey quarters here?
They they will eventually remove, those aren't jockey quarters, those are actually. One of the things Lindsay pointed out is that that to attract some of the the um equestrian rodeos and stuff that we do. You need to have some stalls in place, that also enters into our applications for estate funding. Um, but those permanent brick stalls could be replaced with something. Uh, more temporary or relocated along uh fence lines around the outer outer area, so it's not ransacked dab in the middle. We talked about eventually, uh and this will be down the roadways, is turning dry camping into um. You know, camping stall, RV stalls with with waste and and water available. Makes it more attractive for for both agriculture as well as as potential field users.
But most of these horse trailers now, they kind of, they're all, they they've got panels and they come and they set up their own. Panels and everything.
That's what Lindsay told me, I didn't know that.
Yeah, and most of it is just so we can get, if we if we wanna maintain a lot of the things, they force us to have some capacity, right?
And every stall is used, um, we asked them to clean out the stalls, but I just walked through there the other day and every one of them has been used.
But sometimes we don't know who's even used it, right?
Yeah, um, to promote grand canyon participants, we've given a free rent during fair, but um. If it's not spare time, then they call in and pass it to us, and then it's documented and they pay a fee.
In terms of field usage, and I, again, I'm not a baseball person anymore than I know about arena dirt, um. But I would imagine there's lots of pressure from roughly February, March through June, um I don't know, when when does softball begin?
So they start in January.
Practices? So you've got about six months worth of usage, um. Oh, Willie? Oh, clubs do, I guess, don't they?
Yeah, Shane's not even runs a club, and so he uses it all year until usually about November, and then he takes off in November and it's number, and then he starts back up in January, but the school's official practice doesn't start February first.
Okay.
Um. And um. Yeah, I just thought. I know that three hundred feet was for the layout of the fields to be universal, but I looked at our current field size and it's been two hundred and ten feet. For the last sixty years, and all those guys have been playing fine on two hundred and ten feet. I don't know enough about uh softball tournaments and stuff to be able to tell you whether we really need three hundred feet, but I watched every little league game this season, and. I think three hundred feet's kind of stretching the little league.
No, they they relatively, but they're for softball.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Put the portable fence for middle leagues.
Yeah, they're two camps.
Two camps. They were from two ten to or two hundred to two twenty-five, depending on what you want.
So.
Your home field advantage.
Looking to save space or something, that would be the other recommendation I have is.
Just pull this one in, perhaps?
Yeah.
But what does that mean for tournaments?
It just depends on who's gonna be doing all the benefits down there, it's never, they've never had that option, or they they don't use the fields they have now, from what I understand. Just depends.
Does that make sense to do? I mean. Yeah, so if you did the three hundred feet, then then you'd put a, if it was, you know, little league, then you'd put a snow fence out there, right? To yeah, to ten or whatever.
Yeah.
Um. I guess it's better to have a watch. Be able to play high school ball or regular softball, rather than make it too short. Then you rule out the possibility of them having.
Other uses of basic apartment.
I I had a conversation with Tony, they're flying out the one. Where it, they measured it out for two hundred and twenty-five, right?
Two hundred.
Two hundred and then you go to twenty-five. And I spoke to other folks out of the area where, you know, they they get some teams that come into a tournament. With bombers, that's every time they get up to the fight, they send that thing over the fence and. End up games, you know, that team ends up winning thirty to five or whatever, because they got this bomber, so I told Tony, there's a possibility, we won't put it. Don't put the outside fence, because he's short on fence anyway, because this thing turned out bigger than proposed. Don't put a fence out there, then these guys move out and they run in to catch their fly balls and everything, and it's not a home run every time. Somebody gets up and cranks that thing over two hundred, you know, I'm I'm talking about softball, I'm not talking about little. So that's a possibility, you talked about that, that that again. Put the fence on the sides where you're planning to put leechers on each side, but leave the fence out of out of the outfield, leave it open.
That's a good concept. I could see that.
But we're gonna have to have a perimeter fence because of that road.
Oh, that that.
Maybe these are two.
Yeah.
With that protein right there, that might be, that might be your field that you know is gonna be little things.
Little way.
But but we're open, if you have other ideas, I mean, what what are current, and I I don't really, we were excited, we got a a call from the ten fifteen. Um, the only only, what we would do next is is uh probably develop a uh, what you call the the. I call it sort of a a more robust concept design that that would be built up. Uh Reed's uh identified some low-cost providers that can can do landscape architect sketches, that kind of stuff. And then we then approach uh other funders um and and ask their buying partnerships. Um, so we can go out and then apply for it and and hopefully obtain some some partners to help build this out. Um. We would, of course, also identify and begin to build uh cost estimates, what we think the entire park would run. Um. But but that would be our next step. Um. Like I say, this, we we try, we promised you a bunch, you gave us a direction, field count, we would then develop a plan for you to consider. I think the options are are where the road, if you if you go with this, where the road comes in and uh the direction of the arena. Uh, like I said, if you rotate it, you you sort of cut into this area, parking area, if you leave it where it is, you cut into the the other parking area a little bit. Both are doable, neither neither one is is fatal to the other. Um, it's just a matter of what your preference might be, and if you want us to move forward, then then we would would put these out to uh. Uh, there there's sort of a uh gig economy, like Uber drivers that that do this stuff, you know. Uh, they'll contract and and develop something for it, it'll be nice, presentable, and and then um. That's what we would then take with this with with other funding partners. As well as probably post throughout the fairgrounds, so people understand what we're up to.
Okay, my two cents will pass, I I like this design, I like this layout, I like the three fields, I think this. You know, should be squared up with this, so you don't take parking away from this side, you might take parking away over here, but anyway, that's my.
To to square up to the north-south orientation?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think one day remember us talking about this, so. If you look at where we currently sit now, our parking is gonna like triple. Which is not, but. This parking area is so important to the fair, you know, and access to here, I mean, I I would rather leave that. Nice square the way it is, and then that way you just. We'll take that up.
Maybe.
So you're staying seated the way it is right there.
Just turn this this way. Yeah, exactly. That way you're not impeding into this parking, you're competing into that.
My two cents.
I agree. That'd be my.
Rotate it north-south and then.
Right.
Because at the fair, you you've got people all out in here parking, and if you can pull that in.
And and uh same with this entrance, would be your preference?
Right, I want that entrance, yes.
Where squared up Chaparral.
Yeah, and 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 I like this keeping the the road on the outside. So you're not more like, all these people, yeah, these people aren't crossing whatever they cross.
Yeah, just so you guys know, um, yeah, like um Austin just mentioned, you're gonna have all this parking here. This really isn't going into our current parking area, this won't go past the track. The track is gonna be gone, yeah, the track is gonna be gone, and so that's what I'm saying, it it will not go into this parking area. The track is gonna be gone, yeah, the track is gonna be gone, and so that's what I'm saying, it, it will not go into this parking area, so you, you guys have the benefit.
Here, because the original plan was then to square off the parking this direction. And if you, if you reorient that, you can, you square this off.
Oh, okay.
So, so it doesn't, it doesn't go into the existing parking.
Right.
But if you square this off, this parking becomes more efficient. But like I say, uh, if, if you do it, you take something out of here, um, if you're squared off, you square this whole parking area up.
Yeah, so I was just trying to let you know, you're not losing any parking, don't be worried about that, you're, you're.
You're all.
This whole thing is parking, it's gonna be nice.
You're not, are you shortening in the arena? You're not.
No, obviously so.
The arena stays untouched.
Okay. They love that.
Yeah, yeah, they do like it, and so that's why the original. That's why everybody agreed with the parking because of the big rigs and the trailers to be able to get them in and around through all this. And so, um, so don't be worried about the parking, there is lots of parking, that's what I was trying to comment, so you don't have to worry about that, that's good.
What do you have, direction?
I, I'm hearing two of the three, say three fields, I'm still, I'm still.
Yeah, I, 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 I don't disagree with anything else that's being planned on here, but that third field.
Doesn't sit well with you? Um, I. I operate on a two out of three direction, and, and that's not going to be a, but, but for us to move forward, I, I feel like I've got direction essentially to follow this plan. Rotate the arena north-south, entrance across from Chaparral.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
And continue to clean it up.
Yes, that, that'll be, that'll continue to be cleaned out.
I don't want first impressions to see.
A label, we are, you know what I mean? Yeah, yeah.
So walls on inside or whatever.
Talked about even, even with this, uh, shop area is maybe planning some, some sort of landscape to, to wall that off, so that's likewise not the first thing you see. All of these fences and so forth are movable, except that the fuel stand, shop.
Another, uh, well, we can have an, eventually another entrance like you have here, like we have on, uh, on B the west side. You know, where you got that block on the counter, and it looks nice.
Let's get Loma Linda back first, Wards Canyon operational.
Wards Canyon's operational at the moment, we, we've got some parking issues that we need to address long-term, um, because they are, uh.
Has water and electric done with the water?
They have not, and, and, um, that, I was also talking with, uh, Matt yesterday, we've got a sewer problem as well, if we're, if we're gonna develop that any more than we do. We probably have a sewer problem now because I suspect the flushes are being used, um.
Best, I don't know, just as I, Lindsay was just mentioning that we have to be careful when we, we look at this orientation of this arena. Cause if we get it too tight, we're gonna create a pinch point right here, so that, that's the only. And Lindsay's right, as a.
It's not a directive, it was just a, that's my opinion, I like square it up to the road, you know what I mean?
Get this corner that we used to have right here, it used to curve right here, and it, that was a dead.
You're a nasty little spot right here.
Yeah, but we just don't want that pinching thing, so as long as we can just move it and move it however we need to without getting that pinch point.
And I mean, you're gonna have, I mean, you're gonna have semi, you know, when they bring in, and when they come in to get the animals, when they come in, or, or, you know, bring in rustock or whatever, I mean, you need to have. You definitely need to have some. And turning radius right here, you know, for semi.
Always a big direction, yep, okay, we will, we'll, we'll consider that as well, make sure we go.
Before you close there.
Yes.
Some direction that would be helpful to me is, one is the phasing of it, is your intention with two or three fields at once?
Um, what I think what we'll do is, is. Yeah, what we'll do is we'll develop that as part of the budget, we'll, we'll, um.
If we need a little down later, we, we can, but I mean, I think that should be the initial plan, as it is, we have all of this stuff.
Okay.
I, that's just my opinion.
Well, and I think some of that may depend on the partners we're able to engage, um, some of it being budget constraints, which I think we will have the, the funds to do this kind of stuff as well as other, other, you know, field improvement projects. Um, but, but yeah, uh, let's, let's develop the, the, the model, if you will, um. And, and so let people know where we're going, then we can decide for any phase, which phase goes first and second, third.
And then at various times, we focus on the. This area right here and at other times, the discussion broadens out to the entire campus. And so moving forward, do we just wanna focus on the ballfields and this area here? Um, this could be kicked down the road by the way, so what do you do there, what do you do down here, or do you wanna do it all together?
I mean, I think as far as scheduling. I think the priority is there.
Right.
And I think you work your way that way, you know? But getting this, you know, getting this entrance done and the road laid out and then. Get the infrastructure in and then, yes, work on this area, I mean, seriously, from this.
That's your priority.
Yeah, that's the priority.
This is like a, an old shopping mall, it's a thing of the past, this is the anchor spots.
Yeah.
This is the village of the Jason Penny, and you build around from there.
Yeah.
All right, I'll make it easy, I'll, I'll, I'll make it unanimous in regards to what's being proposed, and then later on, I'll say, I told you so.
That is fine, okay, we'll schedule it. Thank you, gentlemen, um, we have about, uh, seven, eight minutes before we receive the calls, so if you want to close this and then go into executive session, uh, we can then, um.
We can get through consent and the reports.
Yes, we can.
The calendar, did it change anything from last week?
Calendar changing?
Yeah, it did change.
State and legislature haven't done anything?
No, and there's nothing new to report on the budget from the state.
Okay, so we, we've come out of a work session, we go in there, agenda item six. There's nothing to report on calendar and events and, and county state. There's nothing there, we'll go to agenda item seven, consent agenda.
So move that we approve the consent agenda is posted?
A second. We have a motion, a second, is there any discussion here, now we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, we'll go now to agenda item eight, supervisory reports.
I have nothing to.
Oh, I've been at this.
Okay, well, I will, because of time, when I will dispense a report, uh. CSA send out, uh, uh, synopsis of what happened and I think you gentlemen can read that. And so with that, uh, Derek, do we wanna go into executive session or do we?
Right, take a quick break, now be, depend to do it and then come back into executive session, uh, the attorney.
Okay, five minutes, that means that in twelve, we'll take a reset. You know, what we learned, we may add a little bit. We should, we should drag it.
Derek, can you hear us?
I'll fix that. That's good.
No.
I know.
Okay. Just to make sure that, I mean, it says their score is on there.
Yeah, I think they were taking a break until ten fifteen, which might be.
Oh.
I'll just let them know that we're on though.
Okay, yeah. Justin, Georgia, can you hear me?
Yeah.
We can. Can't see anybody, but we can hear you.
No sound, it's gonna be you.
We are doing our best to ensure that nobody outside the executive session can access. The live stream that we normally do our meetings on, so I appreciate your patience, we'll be right with you.